Well, good evening, everyone. It's five o'clock. And this is Flagler County Board of County Commissioners' first public hearing on the fiscal year 2023-2024 budget. If you'd all please rise and join me as we salute our flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And now, as we always do before county meetings, I'm going to observe a moment of silence. While we do that, I encourage you to think about the good life we have here in Flagler County in the state of Florida. Also, keep in mind our first responders who protect us every day, and our men and women in the armed forces that stand the watch 24/7. A moment of silence, please. Thank you. We'll start this public hearing with Ms. Petito has a presentation on the budget.
Good evening, and thank you for being here as we present the fiscal year 2024 millage rates and the adjusted tentative budget. There we go. So I'm going to walk you through the budget calendar. Many of these meetings have already taken place, but this was based on the guidance and feedback from the board. And to be able to provide an opportunity for more public input, we have held more budget workshops and meetings than in previous years from the time our budget discussion started back in December to the end of the public hearings. We will end up having a total of 10 budget-related workshops and meetings to discuss the budget in various phases. Tonight marks our first public hearing, which is September 6th, and then our final public hearing is scheduled for September 18th. And then shortly thereafter, on October 1st, we will start the new fiscal year '24 and start preparing for fiscal year '25's budget. As you all know, the creation of the budget is not a one-and-done. It is something that we continue to monitor throughout the year as we start looking at our revenues and expenditures to ensure that we're on track.
Ms. Petito, on that list of meetings that you had up there, how many of those were open to the public for comment?
All of them, sir.
That's what I thought. Okay, thank you.
So in looking throughout the budget process, we had, from the beginning, some clearly defined objectives. As we started to build a budget in alignment with things that are required of county government per state statute, or things that align to our strategic plan, that really define who we are and what we do for our community. As we continue to transform Flagler County from a small county to a midsize or medium-sized county, it is critical to our continued success to develop and execute a plan that has us ready for growth. So here is a glimpse of some of the main accomplishments that we were able to achieve through the development of our budget. As you can see, we've had significant growth within Flagler County between 2010 and 2020 with 21% growth. Over the last two years, we've experienced 9.8% growth in our community. But, you know, compounding some of the challenges with that growth is the inflation that we've seen. When you look at the timeframe between 2010 and 2020, we've seen 18.1% growth. So over that 10-year period, that was the growth. But when you look at just the last two years, we've seen significant growth in inflation between just two years. We're at 13.7. So again, that top number is over a 10-year period. That bottom one is just the last two years. It's important that we, you know, balance that quality of life and what does it look like. So the accomplishments that we've established here are, you know, looking at new and improved roadways, maintaining our trails and parks, expanding our various community programs. These are all tied to our strategic plan. So when you look at, you know, creating a more effective government, we talk about relying on more technology use to cut back on maybe staff. Also looking to improve transparency, where we've actually opened up a whole portal on our website that explains what we do, how we do it, and how it gets funded, things that are defining our metrics and how we're performing with regard to our strategic plan. We continue to collaborate with our city's partners in the community to look for ways that we can save money, reduce costs, reduce redundancy. We have a focus on public health and safety. In this year's budget, you're going to see an expansion in behavioral health. You're also going to see the addition of five new deputies with the Flagler Sheriff's Office. I believe the sheriff had mentioned that a lot of these were going to be used in the jail when he looks at the increase in inmates. We're also going to be absorbing the 15 firefighter paramedic positions that were part of a SAFER grant. So we're going to have to take those on as the grant opportunity has ended. We also made a commitment to replace firefight, which, you know, is 20-plus years in age. And so we're going to be making strides to replace that. We also have an emphasis on maintenance and infrastructure. When we look at our capital equipment projects, road resurfacing, and beach renourishment, as well as being able to live within our means. This is the third consecutive year that we have reduced county millage. This is the lowest millage rate in Flagler County since fiscal year 13. This budget was developed around our strategic plan, as I stated earlier, which is really the driving force of the roadmap in maintaining Flagler County's quality of life. We are presenting a balanced budget, and we do have healthy reserves as a coastal community. Here's a look at some of the cost-saving measures that we, as staff and the board, have already taken on over the years. As I've mentioned throughout this process, we don't look at the budget once throughout the year. We continually look at ways to improve what we do and focus on things that continue to provide meaningful cost-saving measures, you know, whether it be looking at recently this year, taking a look at our property casualty insurance. Much like everybody else across the state of Florida, your premiums for property insurance have gone up. We are no different. What we saw as a huge increase in our property insurance, we evaluated that coverage and was able to reduce that increase being passed along by going to a funding similar to what we do for our health insurance, where we stop providing coverage on properties that are a value of $1 million or less, and instead placing those premiums or the cost, the money that we would have spent on insurance into a reserve account to offset some of those costs. Some of the other things that we have looked to do, we talk about the purchase of a new drone equipped with LiDAR. It's one of the things that when we go out and we look at the beaches and we're looking at volume of loss, every time we use that LiDAR feature to map our coastline, it's at a cost of roughly about $65,000. In large part, you know, we're looking at doing this pre-storm and post-storm. So you look at that cost and what that means. Well, the cost for providing a drone would pay for that after two events. And it doesn't always have to be a named hurricane event, but even like if you get a nor'easter or things like that where it will require you to go out there more frequently. Like I said, these are just examples of some of the things that we've done. We've used automation technology through our heating and cooling system to do evening holiday weekend setbacks. We've also deployed CO2 sensors, which only come on when you receive a certain level of CO2 inside a facility to cut down on the introduction of outside air makeup, which in the long haul, it actually saves money. It's more efficient and doesn't wear out your equipment as frequently. So as I said, these are just some of the many things that we've employed over the course of our budget to look for ways that we can save money and become more efficient. So I don't know if anybody has questions about these. If anybody has anything, just go ahead and feel free to interrupt. Looking at the budget and preparing the fiscal year '24 budget, the recommendation and priorities are all linked to the goals of our strategic plan, which are really contained in these four buckets. So when you're looking at this, you're looking at effective government, you're looking at growth and infrastructure, economic vitality, and public health and safety. And so this is just kind of the high-level view of each one of those buckets. And then here's a deeper dive into each one of those pillars within that strategic plan, and the investment that we're making into each one of those The overall budget for fiscal year '24 is $287 million, a little bit over that, which does reflect the operating and capital budgets combined. The fiscal year '24 budget includes an estimated aggregate millage recommendation of 8.3343 mils. As I stated previously, this is or would be the third consecutive year of a millage rate reduction, and represents a total reduction of .0119 mils of the aggregate millage rate from the prior year, fiscal year '23. So here's a look at the combined or aggregate millage rate over the past 10 years. As I mentioned previously, this is the third consecutive year of reducing millage, and through the adoption of this budget, will be the lowest millage rate in Flagler County within the last past 10 years. So if you go back to the fiscal year 1314 budget, this would be a reduction of .241 mils. But if you're looking at more recently, which would be your fiscal year 1819, where we had a high millage rate, this is actually a reduction of .3904. Again, this is the, what we are proposing is to be the lowest millage rate in the last 10 years. Here's a look at the countywide budget, which includes all funds. You'll see that it's a balanced budget where your estimated revenues match your expenditures for fiscal year '24. It's a requirement by law that the two match. And then here's a summary of the changes, or the summary of your Schedule A, which was provided to you in your backup documents. When we first had the tentative budget, we were presenting a $278 million-plus budget. There have been changes from that first tentative budget to the public hearing, which represents the adjusted tentative budget amount of $287 million, $38,539. That is an overall change from the tentative to the first public hearing of $8,413,264,000. These are the notable changes. As we've discussed previously, any changes from the tentative budget to tonight's meeting have been done in the open as required, and then they were provided to you on your Schedule A. But just to go over a summary of some of those notable changes, we're looking at the increase of $1.5 million as part of a transfer that'll go towards the replacement of firefight helicopter purchase. We also have an increase of $5.8 million, which represents grant revenue for the paving of Old Hall Creek. And then you also have an increase in capital preservation related to a grant match that's coming for the replacement of the EOC roof through the state of Florida. So we've made some adjustments to that budget to represent those changes that you see there. There's also a slight decrease in ship fundings, so that we're not budgeting future refunds until once we've received them. We'll then bring them back in front of the board for board action. And then a slight decrease in the gas tax fund based on EDR or Economic Demographic Research Projections, as well as the keeping of the flat Daytona North Service District assessment. And that's basically what you're seeing there in the decrease for that last one, which is $674,000. Here's a look at the Flagler County Budget in Brief. This is part of your budget book that you'll see coming out. This is pretty standard. We do this every year. It kind of provides a snapshot to be able to show you the total budget, the total general fund budget, and then the property value increase, as well as credit rating. It also covers the adopted millage rates, and your highlights for some of your capital improvement projects, and your FTE, or full-time equivalent, position count at Flagler County. Here's the other side of the Budget in Brief, which breaks down in some pie charts your reserves, showing the difference between your financial stability or your 2/12ths, as well as your restricted funds, which are held for either DRIs, personnel, we've got the historic courthouse, some of those CAM charges, or common area maintenance, or donations that were made of part of a DRI or development of regional impact. They're held for specific or restricted purposes. And then you also have your contingency, which represents 5% of your operating reserves. Those are the funds that typically you'll use throughout the year if something comes up that was unanticipated and presents a need for you to fund. Then in the center, you've got, again, just a different look at the revenues and expenditures of next year. And then to the far right, a use of those funds and how they're being applied. So starting with the top, the $50 million, $793 represents what we're giving to the constitutional officers. However, it does not include the tax collector, who is fee-based, which is actually in our appropriation of general government. So then you're looking at general government. That includes us, as well as the tax collector. And then you look at public safety. That does not include the sheriff or law enforcement, public safety. He's included in the constitutional portion. But that makes up our fire rescue, EMS, firefight, emergency management, and our building department, which is categorized as part of being public safety. And then you take a look at our transportation, which includes not general fund. There's a small portion of general fund in there, but that's largely your enterprise funds, your airport, public works. Culture and recreation makes up your library, parks and rec. Also, your lifeguards that you pay for at the City of Flagler Beach. Human services is made up of our senior services, the adult daycare. We also have congregate meals and other social service programs. The physical environment budget is largely your solid waste and dune restoration work. Economic environment is economic development, housing, and veteran services. And then that interfund transfer is the money that's allocated for capital projects or capital preservation maintenance. It also includes public safety communications, drug court, teen court, and debt service on the sheriff's operations center. And then your debt service is your other debt service that you have largely for this complex. And then your other uses in court-related, which are primarily, as it states, other uses and things that are related to the court system. And then you've got your $63 million in reserves, which matches the left side of the page. So as part of the public hearing for fiscal year '24, here is a schedule of the special assessments as they stand right now for fiscal year '24. All of these assessment rates are remaining the same as last year, with the exception of the mandatory solid waste collection and disposal special assessment district. And that is for residents that live in the unincorporated areas of Flagler County. As you know, we went out for a new request for proposal. We had two contractors that we had moved through. We ended up negotiating with the lowest contractor, which happened to be staying with Waste Pro for the services. But as you may recall, the last time we went out for the mandatory solid waste assessment and we crafted our ordinance, it was back in, I believe it was 2006. So it's been some time since we've changed our ordinance. And at the time, back in 2006, we had used a cap of $300. Over the last couple of years, those costs have gone up, but due to timing, we were not able to go out and change the ordinance. So last year, and part of this year, we've been subsidizing that solid waste collection in the unincorporated areas using franchise fees and things that are revenue back to the county. That's how we've been able to offset that. Unfortunately, the budget does not allow us to continue to offset it. So we've had to increase those rates. And so what you're seeing there represents an increase in those solid waste services, which are placed on the tax roll as a non-advalorem assessment. It's at the bottom of their tax bill. And then here's a look at the countywide millage, which excludes the special districts or special assessments that were previously listed. As I stated before, this would be the third reduction, consecutive reduction in the aggregate millage rate for Flagler County. And what we were proposing for that millage rate was an aggregate rate of 8.3343 mils. And so that concludes my portion of the presentation. Unless you all have questions for me, I would turn it over to our Financial Services Director, John Brower.
Mr. Chair, John Brower, continuing with the agenda for today. We're hitting number three now to adopt a special assessment roles for FY '23 and '24. There are two resolutions as part of this item. The first one is all the assessments, with the exception of the solid waste assessment. And once that's approved, adopted, then we'll do the solid waste resolution. But if you would just approve those two resolutions as part of this, number three. I could read it out for you if you like. I could read it out for you if you like.
You've already shown them to us, so we need a motion to approve the special assessment rolls for 2023 minus the trash pickup assessment. Correct? Is that correct? So Commissioners, I need a motion.
This is separate from the garbage?
Yes.
Sorry. Separate from the garbage.
Yeah, separate from the garbage pickup.
So, motion to approve the assessment rates and assessment rolls for Agenda Item Number Three.
Second.
It's moved and seconded to approve the special assessment rolls with the exception of garbage. That would be 2023-74. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, say nay. Hearing none in the motion.
But was there no public comment on these?
We're going to have public comment on the... Oh, we can do them now, if you'd like.
Yes, we should take public comment on each resolution.
All right. So before we voted, I'll open for public comment on the special assessment rolls for 2023, 2024, minus the garbage pickup. Anybody wishing to address the commission, please step forward, state your name, and address your comments to me.
My name's Steve Montano, live in Flagler County. I have a question about the special assessment, which is an existing assessment, the way I understand it. The special part of it is it's being raised, is that correct? The existing assessment is $300, and it's going up to 428.
Which assessment are you talking about? Which assessment?
Is the garbage is not included in this?
Not included in this motion.
I'm not asking about the garbage. I'm asking about the special assessment for solid waste.
That's garbage.
That's it. Same thing.
That's garbage?
That's garbage. We're not... That'll be the next motion.
Okay.
Since you know an approach, I'll bring it back to the commission. It's been moved and seconded to adopt the special assessment rolls, 2023, 2024. Resolution 2023-74. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, say nay. The motion passes. Next, we need a motion to adopt the solid waste pickup.
The Resolution's 2023-75, Mr. Chair.
You looking for a motion, Mr. Chair?
Yes, I'm looking for a motion.
Yeah, motion to adopt the solid waste assessment.
Second.
Moved and seconded to adopt the solid waste assessment, 2023-75. Open up to public comment. Anybody in the public wish to comment on the solid waste assessment? Yes, sir. Now you're up.
The special assessment is an increase, is that correct? It was $300, it's now 428. That's what the letter says.
Right, and that was explained by Mr. Petito.
Yes. And further on the letter, it says that received written notification, but there will be no more written notification until it reaches $750. That's what the letter states. Is that correct?
If that's what it says in the letter, yes, sir.
He needs an explanation of that.
Yeah. Why, we're going to have a public hearing about this one, but you can increase it from 428 all the way to 750, and you don't have to do anything more. There's no more notification to any of us.
Mr. Petito.
I would probably defer this to legal. That's one I had mentioned previously. Back in 2006, when we started this, you have to provide as part of this notification when you're doing the ordinance, that you're establishing the rate for that year, but you're also establishing a cap. That's why it's taken so long, going back from 2006 to today. You provide kind of a buffer, if you will, of what that looks like. But I would defer to Sean in legal, who helped craft that letter.
Sure. That letter that you received is required by statute, and the reason is because we are now exceeding the cap we self-imposed, or the county commission self-imposed 15 or so years ago of $300. Each year, you will have a public meeting where you can come. It happens here every September in this chamber, where you can come and object to the amount of the assessment. But you won't get another letter in the mail unless we had in many years from now to exceed the $750 threshold. Then we would have to redo the notice and start over.
But I think, right, if I can?
Go ahead, sir.
The increases now are just limited to a CIP or some measurable... It's not just random.
Correct, yes. We competitively solicited a new contract, and we awarded it to the lowest bidder. But in order to cover the cost of that contract, we have to raise the rates. All of the assessment goes into a separate fund, and it's only used to pay the cost of the solid waste contract.
How often does that contract come up?
We now have a five-year contract in place. There are es-
For five years?
It's set for five years, however, there are escalation clauses. So each year, it could go up. The most it could go up in a given year is 10% for the next five years.
Mr. Chair, question for Sean. So, in all future years, it's going to be on the trim notice?
Our property appraiser does not put special assessments on the trim notice, only the millage taxes.
Okay.
But it would be conducted in a public hearing that is noticed ahead of time and open to the public.
Okay. So there'll be another hearing if there's an increase, but no notice? We'll get a notice of a hearing, but there will not be another letter that says-
That is correct, sir.
... the rate fills up. And the limit, the cap on the increase by the... From the contractor is 10%?
10% each year, based on CPI or other factors that they can request, but only 10% each year for the next five years.
And he has to request it. He has to request it.
And the 10% that they increase, what will that... How will that reflect on our increase?
Yes, I said only because I didn't want you to think it would jump up to $750 in one year. I'm sorry, sir. What was your-
10% equate to the 428 we're paying now? So if it went up 10%, is that another $42?
Correct, sir, yes. It could, conceivably. However, we do get franchise fees. It's up to the county commission. They don't have to impose the full 10% every year. It would be all in a public hearing decided like this.
Okay, thank you.
Next speaker.
Hello. My name is Maria Redici, and I also live in the county. And I do have some questions and some concerns. Based on this $428.90, $428.90 that we're going to be charged on our tax bill, that is an exactly 69.7% increase. And if you go from 428 to 750 in 2025, now we're looking at about a 57% increase on top of the 69, right? So I know you said that there is a cap of 10%. I don't see that in the letter anywhere, that there's a cap on the amount that you can charge us. My other concern that I have is that we have a company, which is Waste Pro, is that correct? Is this a private company? And is it a private company for profit? Because that's a concern to me in the state that you're put in that letter, that if we don't pay this $428.90 in my 2024 tax bill, that you're going to be able to give me a lien on my property. Now, I want to know how that can happen when this is a private company that you guys have aligned yourself with and gave them the contract. So I need to get clarification on how that works, because it clearly states on that letter. And the other point that I want to make, and that statute, .197.363, back in 1988, and it was Noah McKenon that addressed this actual ad garbage tax on our tax bill, pretty much it states, "The use of tax certificate and tax deeds is prohibited in the collection of service charges. Given this legislative prohibition, the county governing body would have no authority to enact a county ordinance making garbage collection service charges collectible through the sale of a certificate." So I want to know how that was put on my tax bill. I have questioned this in the past. I have not gotten a satisfactory answer. So I'm leaving... I'm giving this to... I'm turning this over to you, and I hope that you can address these issues that I have and give me a satisfactory answer, because what I'm looking at doesn't make any sense to me. It's a private company for profit that you guys are collecting money for, and then you're going to levy a tax lien on my property that has nothing to do with the county or any other type of services from this county. And I leave that to you, and I hope you can address it.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Hello, my name's Rob Rodriguez. I'm in District Four, Favorreta. I'm actually in the city of Benel, but I have been incorporated into this tax roll, this increase. Like the previous lady stated, we're voting, or you're voting, on $428 assessment as of this year. Nothing in here does it state that you cannot raise it to $728 the next year. I know what the city attorney said, but he very delicately did not mention that the city could raise it. He said that the contractor could not raise the price by 10%. You're talking an increase from a little over $3 million to $6.1 million. You're talking an increase of this year from $300 to $428, over 25%. You're talking an increase on people, and for myself, who live in a rural area, who live in a subdivision off the road. We are one-third to one mile from the road that we could take our trash to. We cannot take... We have never seen recycling, we've never seen yard waste. There's no way that we can bring all of our stuff from our subdivision and put it on County Road 200 in that one spot. You're charging us for services that we have no way of using whatsoever. And we're not even in the county, we're in the city, but we're being grouped into this. You're also talking about... What is... So you have a 3.5 for this year. What is the budget for this year for those services? Anybody know the budget for those services for this year?
I believe it was in the letter. When you look at the letter, it talks about the amount that was collected, but if you give me a minute, I'll pull up the budget for next year.
Yeah, the letter just states that there will be a total revenue assessment at 3.5 million. There's nothing that says how much the actual cost is. How much is built in there as buffer in this year?
Let me pull up the budget.
There's huge questions here that need to be answered, as far as what... I mean, are you voting on that the county will only raise when the contractor raises? Because that's not what's in here. Okay? There's definitely questions that need to be answered, that when you're doing a budget that's forecasted for five years out, needs to be addressed. And they're not being addressed, and I haven't heard anything to that nature.
Well, if I could, just let me take a couple of your questions. The first one, you reside in the city of Benel, but you feel like you're being lumped into this.
According to this letter, I am.
So, when you annexed into the city of Benel, you had the option to either take city services, where the city of Benel, who provides their own garbage, can provide service to you, or you can opt in to have the county provide it. So there would have been an opt-in, opt-out provided to you at the time of annexation. And if that hasn't happened, then I would recommend that you talk to the city of Benel and either opt in for their service, I don't know what the cost is, or, you know, opt out of the county providing it, and that would clear up that cost. When we brought the item to the board, we brought it to the board April 3 of 2023, and this is when we brought the new contract for residential service. At the time, we had two proposals, one for Waste Pro, one for FCC. FCC is the provider in Palm Coast. In looking at the difference between the two amounts, Waste Pro is about $50 less a year than what you would have gotten with FCC. Flagler County has never charged more to the resident for garbage, other than whatever the cost of the services and whatever the cost is to collect those fees. So when we put things on a tax roll, we have to pay the property appraiser a percentage and the tax collector a percentage to be able to certify the role and collect on behalf of Flagler County. So what you're getting as part of your bill is the cost of service plus the cost of collection. That way, we don't have staff billing. Previously, what we've had was staff that has, you know, provided billing to folks, whether it be quarterly or monthly. Folks don't pay.
Okay, I understand that, but you haven't answered the question. What was the increase in the bid? Because you are charging us $3.5 million additional or increase, but you haven't said what the increase was from the contractor. That's what the question was.
So if you look, as I stated before, we were capped at $300 from the resident. So at the time, last year, and what was in the Agenda Item when we brought it to the board back in April of 2023 of this year, your cost that we were paying was $29.77. What you were paying was $25, because we were capped at 300. We absorbed the difference, that five, or I'm sorry, rather, the $4.77 a month difference. We were subsidizing each resident to the tune of $57.24. We did that for well over a year.
Very well, but you're increasing this by $128. So I'm still getting back to the question of what was the budget?
If you'd let me finish, what rate you're now going to be paying, you should have been paying $29.77. However, we chose not to charge you that. We charged you 25. If you look at the $29.77 that we were being charged, but not passing off to the resident, the new rate is... Goes from $29.77 to $32.05 a month. So when you do that, it's a 7.6% increase. Unfortunately, we absorbed the initial amount, and so now what you're getting is the full amount, which is what you should have been getting all along if we had the mechanism to increase it. So now what you're seeing is a huge spike from the 300 a year that we were trying to capture versus what you're being levied now. And if you want, if you give me a second, I can pull up the budget. So if you were to go online, and I don't know if I have a way to put this on the screen, but when you look at the residential solid waste, it is a revenue must meet expenditures. So the tentative budget for fiscal year '24 is $3,511,290. And if we can find a way to put this on the screen, I'd be more than happy to show you.
$3 million, I'm sorry. So there's $17,000 that's unaccounted for?
Well, sometimes you have growth built into the budget, so we don't typically budget exactly how many customers you have today. We anticipate some growth.
And you're saying that there was a 7% increase from our month to month?
7.6% increase.
Which would be 7.6% for the year?
For the year.
Well, it's a lot... 300 to 428 is a lot more than 7%, ma'am.
It is, and if you understood what I said previously, we absorbed the initial change.
So we're paying back that...
No.
We're paying back what you absorbed?
No. You're only being charged whatever today's rate is. We're not going back, and we're not charging you for the amount that you did not pay. We have already absorbed that on your behalf. What we are levying is the amount to provide service today. And that is at the new rate, which has the front foot... Or the assessment at $428.90, and that includes the service to Waste Pro and the collection fee that is charged for the tax collector and property appraiser for putting it on there. You can see the budget, it's right in front of you.
So then the other question that I had, which I'm still waiting an answer on, is from, I'm assuming, Mr. Hadid, which is the legal aspect of the raising it possibly to 750 next year.
Yes, I'd like to address that. I'm Sean Moylan, I'm Mr. Hadid's deputy. The county cannot by law make a profit off of this. We can't charge you up to that $700 next year just because we have a gap somewhere else in the budget. The money we collect is only for the cost, and this is by law, is only to cover the cost of providing the service and collecting. of providing the service and collecting the fees, things related to that service. So we couldn't go beyond, if Waste Pro next year needs 10% more, sure, we could raise the rate by 10%, but we couldn't raise it by 20 just because we wanted a little buffer. And that's by law. The charge has to be something that specially benefits your property, that is the collection of the garbage. But we're not allowed to build into this any sort of cushion or to take the money and use it in some other project unrelated to garbage. With taxes, the county can take a tax from you and spend it on somewhere in the hammock or somewhere on a different part of the county, on roads or libraries or anything. But with this, it's limited to solid waste, it's in a separate fund, and we can't charge you more than it's costing us to provide the service. That's what stops us from going up to 750 in one year. That's the answer to that question.
Okay. All right, thank you.
You're welcome. Next speaker, please.
Good evening. My name is Terri Price, and I have lived out here for almost 40 years in the Daytona North, or as us old people call it, the Mondex area, also known as the redheaded stepchildren of the county. So I'm greatly concerned about this garbage bill and the big jump it proposes. Our area is very poverty area or close to that, and to tack on another $400 and something dollars for my husband and I, we have six places, and some of our trailers are not rented, but because it's an improved lot with sewer and water, we'll also pay for garbage that is not even out at the curb. So, does this come in, and I was confused about that, does this come in at, starting in November where we compare taxes, or will this be on the following year? Is it this year? Somebody answer me that? That's pretty quick, especially for a lot of people out there that have children. We all know things go up, and I totally understand taxes and all are going to go up too. All those people out there that are barely making it, check to check, that are low on food, are like, surprise, you're going to have another $400 and something on top of whatever your taxes went up again. And, you know, you absorbed it before. Is there not some way to absorb some more or part of it? We, you know, we'll be fair, we want to pay our fair share. I don't think that's fair. I am very grateful that you rolled back the mileage or the frontage, because that would have been two bills, and we feel, a lot of us feel in Mondex, that we're trying to be run out, run out these lower class or so-called lower class, just say, I don't consider anyone lower class, I'm just saying. We are tight with money out there. A lot of people are tight, they're working two, three jobs and still not making it. So, you know, where do we go with this? I mean, I do understand that things go up. Obviously, we all pay more for everything. But, you know, our area is really tough. I wish you would go out there and talk to some of these people. They're barely making it. Food bank is the only thing keeping a lot of them surviving right now. So is there, and I thought I heard, maybe I was wrong, something about you ran out of time for a grant, I don't know if that was pertaining to the garbage as well, but if so, I mean, are there any grants or anything that can help us? We just want help. We want to be able to live our lives and try to do better for our children. This takes money out of their food. Thank you.
Next speaker.
Should be accessible. How's everybody doing today? Yeah, my name is Evan Futch. I'm a property owner in her, in the Mondex area. And I don't live there, I do have a relative that lives there and is on a fixed income. And of course, this will affect her because she pays the taxes on the property, I do not. But with that being said, she's also unable to be here, as many, I'm sure, in the Mondex area are unable to be here right now to speak their minds on the issue. The increase for many would be considered a lot, and I have sat here and heard the conversation about the 10% cap, but we're going to start paying now, or the people of Mondex is going to start paying now, the 25 or 30% increase is being proposed. I don't so much sit here and be concerned that you guys can't do this, you must absorb the cost. You're going to approve this tonight, I'm sure of it, and it's going to be forced down the throats of those who can't afford it, and a continued attack on affordable housing will occur. Now, what I'm suggesting is that even though you won't sit here tonight and approve this ordinance with a condition to bring this in slowly to help those that can't afford it, which I would like to see, I would like to see at least an update to the ordinance and provide a condition or provide a rewrite and see this in another month to provide for clarification of the 10% cap. Because like the other gentleman that spoke, I don't believe it either. And I believe that if costs need to go higher, they can go higher. I believe that I don't get the newspaper that you guys advertise in, nor do I get any newspaper, because it's irrelevant to this day for advertising. But we all focus on that. And so I will not have the opportunity to be here next year. I will not have the opportunity to be here the year after. I know it's a state minimum requirement to provide this letter today, and I know that that's always in question as well, as to, do you do the state minimum or do the, should you do what's right to get the information out to those who maybe can't afford to have a newspaper subscription? But in any case, as mentioned in, from the other lady in Mondex there, you know, the trash service isn't being provided either is another issue. If you're going to provide the extra costs, drive the truck out there and pick up the trash. But other than that, the, well, my last words is I would just condition the ordinance and give clarification on the 10%. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Free mic there.
I'm getting, oh, you got it. I was going to bring a mic over to you.
Yeah, my name's Don Price. Lifelong resident of Flagler County, served on the fire department, and you can, you stand up for my credentials here. Now, I know that the federal government has money for that helicopter. All you got to do is apply for it. They got grants out for that. And if you need a drone, if you're going to spend that much of money on a helicopter, fly the helicopter. Yes, cheaper to fuel the drone, cheaper because it doesn't use the fuel. How much money, you know, can you save by going and getting a grant for that helicopter? And the life flight, the time in the life flight of that helicopter is what? The life expectancy of the helicopter, do you all know the life expectancy of that bird over there? Anybody can tell me that? How long she can fly?
30 years.
And it cannot be recertified by FAA to fly another 30? Sure can. True or not? It's cheaper to get it certified, recert, and then to replace. You can re-outfit cheaper than you can replace. Or go for a grant. It makes a lot more sense to me, y'all, than throwing out all this money we really don't have. Let's act like we got a little bit of common sense in this chamber. If the government's got it above us, let's go for it. If there's a grant, get it. Don't dump it on the patrons of Flagler County who can't afford it. Like my wife says, we live paycheck to paycheck. And Flagler County, the biggest problem is the people don't have a voice. You guys took our voice. We don't have commission meetings in here at 7 o'clock anymore. Mr. Dance will tell you, 7 o'clock's when the meetings start. No working person in Flagler County can be in here the time you guys decide to hold these meetings. Please, take in consideration, given us our voice and putting it back at 7 o'clock. That's all we ask, is to be heard. And the way you guys have it, there's no working man that can race from where he's at at work and be here at 5 o'clock. If y'all out there agree with me at 7 o'clock, please raise your hand. Please, there, there Commissioner, take a look at your, everybody's got their hand raised. Please give us our voice. Put it back at 7. Go after all the grants you can get. It's easy to do. Spend that grant money. Save us money. Please. Thank you very much. Y'all have a blessed evening.
Next speaker.
I promise, I'm not going to say much, I'm Bonnie Turner, and I'm from the Mondex. But 15 years ago, however, I remember I was here on the trash bill meeting, and it was $231 with a cap of 300. I think raising it to 428 in one lump sum, if you subsidize, you say we subsidize, that means us people subsidized ourselves. But to raise it, the cap to 750 is unacceptable. You know, $231 to 300, now you're going to say 428 to 750? It's unacceptable. It needs to be renegotiated later on down the road when the trash people say they have to have more money, you know? Other than that, you know, I've been here for a lot of stuff. But yeah, I think 750 is way off the chart.
Next speaker.
My name is Voss, I'm also from the Mondex area. I've been living there for the past five years or so. I honestly did not know about the garbage, but it just went up. I did not receive that letter. I had a question about the assessment of the front footage.
Speak into the microphone, please.
Just raise it up.
I had a question about the assessment of the front footage of the property, because I received a letter stating that Flagler County Board of County Commissioners will consider increasing Daytona North Service District, meaning the purpose of this assessment is to provide and maintain streets, recreational facilities, drainage, stuff like that. To be honest with you, I've lived there five years, I've never experienced anybody maintaining the roads other than dragging mud back and forth with a tractor, you know what I mean, after it rains? So I just want to see if there's going to be a raise on the front property lines for each property owner. I just want to see results, you know? I want to see millions.
We didn't raise it, we didn't raise it.
We didn't raise it? I saw on one of the slides that it was dropped down to 58 cents versus $1.16, is that still true?
Yes.
So we'll be able to see that still 58 cents per property line on the next tax bill?
That's right.
Which is coming out in the next month or so. So I just want to see that 58 cents per each foot to be utilized properly. That's all I'm trying to say, because it's muddy out there, it's wet out there, there's no drainage out there. You know, the only street we have is Mahogany and Avocado, that's basically it, you know? And Lansing. So I just want to see results. I plan to stay in this community for the next 20, 30 years, because, you know, Flagler is beautiful. We'll just try to maintain and keep all these streets the way they should be. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Isabella Ortonowski, I live in the-
Closer to the mic, please, I can't hear you.
You cannot hear me?
Yeah.
Isabella Ortonowski, I live in Armond Beach Estates, which is on the Barry Island, and I just want to second the gentleman that just spoke. When we have the assessment of the taxes estimated here, I think the value was given as $300,000 a property, that is hardly any property in Flagler County anymore because of the value of the land and value of the houses. However, so that bill goes really high. A lot of us come here for the retirement, right, to be on the fixed income. So we just want the realistic assessment to what the taxes are going to be like so we can plan for our retirement and not be short. And second, if we pay taxes, we want something, we talk about the roads. In our community, we have the same road for 30 years. And I hear over and over again at HOA meetings that there is no chance that anybody from the county will come and visit to check the condition on the road. So I think it leaves us with a question mark, what are we using our money for, right? And how do we prepare for the retirement so we don't all of a sudden see the increases like people talk here about when they are on the fixed income? So I just want this to be considered when you work on those things. Thank you.
What's your address? Where do you live?
Where do I live? 44 Cottonwood Trail.
Which development is that in?
Armond Beach Estates.
And those roads are all-
It's across the street from Bangs Landing.
Well, Armond Beach Estates, those roads are all paved.
No, no, we are not. Well, we are paved 30 years ago, not recently.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm out there quite regularly. If you want to give me a call, I'll come out and visit you personally.
Okay, thank you very much.
Next speaker.
I don't think this very much goes on the 58 cents or the garbage pickup, but I do think there's a question a lot likes to know. We've been paying county taxes out there at Daytona North, and we've never, ever had like a list that shows of the over $2 million that we're putting in, how much comes back to us? What, any percentage of that comes back to us? I don't want to talk about state grants or federal grants or anything like that unless the county has put a little bit in with it. But we need to know why we're paying all of this money and none of it is coming back to us, unless it comes in grants. It's not from the county. I do understand the county pays it for us. But we need to, you know, we're all not too smart out there, I know y'all think that. But we need to have a way for us having access to find out exactly where all of our money goes, and even more important than that, how much of it actually comes back out there to us? Because I know you're wanting us to pay for our own roads, you're wanting us to pay for our own recreation center. I do understand, we get fire, we get the school, and we get the police department. But what beyond that do we get? And I'd like to know how much that actually costs you. I don't think that that's unfair for us to be able to find out where our money's going.
What's your, what's your address?
What's your address?
What's your address?
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 1681 Aspen Street. It's in the Mondex, Daytona.
Well, we're going to pull something up here. The, you can go on the website, our website, and put your address in there, and it will tell you exactly. Here it is.
I want to know for the entire Mondex, is that going to do that too? It's going to show where-
It's going to tell you what your taxes, you pay taxes, and this is where your taxes go. So lawn enforcement, $79. Fire service, $36. Other services, health and human services, 15. Facilities management, nine. Tax collector, eight. Parks and recreation, seven.
Whoa, 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 wait, I see parks and recreation. It don't come out to our park? I want to know what actually goes back into the Mondex. Somebody show us that, that's what we need to know. We don't want it all going to Flagler, Palm Coast, Benel, whatever. I want to know what actually comes out to the Mondex area that we're paying for. Most of us have an aversion to town, we don't even like to come in here. We spend our time out there. It's of no advantage whatever you throw up up here. Your sidewalks don't make difference to us, we don't use them. You know, I want to know exactly what is being spent out in the Mondex area on us. Is that fair?
I'm not sure.
Wouldn't you guys like to know? Wouldn't you guys like to know?
Yeah.
Like, all this money we're paying, how much of it actually goes back to our area? I know you don't consider that we need anything, but, I mean, we have to pay for our own roads, and we have to pay for our own parks and stuff like that. I do realize that there is some things that we've gotten state grants and federal grants. But I wanna know the money that is, of the total of Daytona North, that's going in, how much of it is actually coming back to us? I don't wanna know on an individual label, yes, I can bring this up, but I wanna know what you all are actually spending out there. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Frank Core, Pecan Avenue, out in Daytona North. Who was in charge of the bidding for the companies that pick up? I understand, you guys, your hands are tied, we have to have a third party, nobody wants trash piled up all over their yards, it has to be picked up. But with the increase that they're charging, and we're, our hands are tied, we don't, we can't argue with the waste management and them people, but I can think I can survive out there if my trash was only picked up one day a week instead of twice. I don't know. If somebody would've mentioned that to the guys that they were putting the bids out to, we might not be looking at a $128 increase in January or October 1st, or whenever it starts. Is that a consideration now, or is it too late?
Oh, it's too late, we have a contract.
We already signed a contract with it?
I signed it earlier than-
So.
All right, that's all I had to mention, I was just wondering.
Thank you, Frank. Seeing no one else approach, I'll bring it back to the Commission. We have a motion and a second to approve Resolution 2023-75. Special Assessment for Solid Waste. All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Motion passes unanimously.
Is there room for a couple of clarifications or questions?
Sure.
What would it, and just from hearing public comment, what would it take to reassess the, especially in the Mondex district, a single pickup? Moving, so, moving forward, if we address waste pro and, and address segregating pickups?
You would likely have to renegotiate or do an amendment to the contract-
Right.
When they put in their proposal, it was based on whatever the parameters were, going back with like service. So whatever service they were provided before, that is what they're being provided now. It works in some areas, it doesn't work in others. When we have gotten complaints from folks that generate a lot of trash, the issue on the west side is animals, and animals getting into the trash. So if they aren't picked up on a regular basis, you now run the risk of having animals, you know, kinda spread that garbage around. It does present a challenge, so, based on the customer concerns, complaints, feedback, we've never been asked. Certainly we could, I don't know what that looks like, we'd have to renegotiate and try to do some sort of an amendment, but it was based on whatever scope of service they were providing before.
And each residence, regardless of where they are, do we pick up at their location, or is there some locations where it has to be? I always assumed it was at the residence.
If, it depends, because usually, typically, it would be at your residence, but if you live on a private drive or a private road, you have to bring it out to the county. Or you have a method that you can apply for an exemption, if you can demonstrate certain things, like whether, and it's tied to our ordinance, whether it be size of property, if you can demonstrate a way that you're disposing of your trash, maybe some folks have farms or businesses, and they have an opportunity to dispose of it there, where they're already paying for service, things like that. But it's an application exemption process. But typically, to answer your point, it is wherever you're meeting a public road or county road. So not a private drive, we're not gonna go down a private drive to pick it up at their, you know, house necessarily.
The old way still is in effect, where if you show that you're paying a different hauler or something, you don't have to have this on your, but you have to provide proof that you're just not burying your trash.
Or burning it, or something like that, yes.
So somebody, it's being taken, and we don't have landfill in the county to personally take it without handkerchiefs.
Wait, we-
Anything else?
No, that's it, thank you.
Okay, thank you. I personally wanna thank you all for coming out. I mean, we don't know this stuff if you don't come here and talk to us. And, and I'm not, don't take this the wrong way, I wish you'd come out when we were discussing these things months ago.
Can I buy this?
Nope, 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 there's no chance talking, I'm just, just putting out my thoughts on this. Cause we need to hear from you, and then, and this was good tonight. This was really good, that you guys came out and talked. And, and you heard Andy, I mean, we're gonna look into some of this stuff, and, but, we are so far down the road on this budget, we're getting ready to pass the damn thing. Okay, and, but we've been spending months and months discussing this, and each item, and so, and I'll be honest, dead honest with you, nobody, not one person has showed up at our budget hearings. Not one person. So, you know, I'll just, I'll just throw that out to you. There's a lot of opportunity to come tell us how you feel, and we appreciate this. This was good tonight, cause we got to hear some good stuff. So, please keep that in mind next year, if you get a chance, try to, try to come to our budget hearings. I know, we try to schedule them all different times of the day, so people can come, but, but, that's, that's it.
May I say one quick thing? I just wanted to, first of all, thank the board, there's a lot of people that did come to these budget meetings, that are back again. We were looking at, I mean, we were moving toward doubling that tax, and now it's flat, the special assessment out there, and I wanna thank the board for, for working on that last workshop to make sure that we stayed flat. But to Commissioner Dance's point, in, in the Mondex, they do struggle. It is our affordable housing, and I'll say it again and again, we need to work towards removing the special assessment and giving them general services on those roads. And if that's something we do this year-
I think we've committed, right? I think we've committed to doing that.
We've committed to looking at that.
We've committed to do, to get the roads done out in your area. We've, we've, we've had a hearing, and we've committed to do that.
Yeah.
But I think in response to the lady who asked about what we get back for what we put in, I think that is the process we committed to-
That's what we need to do.
To make sure that the original assessment language still applies.
That's right. So that, that's our homework, it's the board, is to work through that this year, and see if the special assessment needs to remain, and what goes into it for you guys, versus what your tax dollars go towards out there.
And we'll do better, and I think you'll see it. I think you'll see results. Okay?
I do wanna thank you guys for not talking on the extra 58.
Yeah, we're trying to, we're-
I meant to do that a minute ago.
This is a hard job.
I do appreciate it, because right now, this is the worst time in this country that we've ever seen.
Yeah, yeah, that's-
62?
That's good, that's good. Okay.
Senator 78 PM, please.
It's time to adopt the FY 2023-2024 tentative millage rate and tentative budget. Mr. Brower.
I thought- Mr. Chair, before we get into the script, if we can adopt the five-year capital improvement program, number four.
Number four?
Yes, sir. And we just asked the board to-
I moved to adopt the fiscal year 2024-2028 five-year capital improvement program.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the FY 24-2028 five-year capital improvement program. Anybody in the, in the audience care to discuss that with us? Seeing no one come forward, I'll bring it back to the Commission. All in favor of approving the capital improvement program, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Hearing none, the motion passes. Next, we're gonna adopt the proposed millages and tentative budget. The Flagler County Board of County Commissioners will now enter the portion of the public hearing related to the Flagler County fiscal year 2023-24, proposed millage rates and adjusted tentative budget as required by the Florida Statute, Chapter 129 and 200, as advertised in the Truth in Millage or TRIM notices. If anyone in our audience is here for the purpose of contesting their assessment, a petition for adjustment with the Value Adjustment Board should be filed by 5:00 PM Monday, September 11th, 2023, as stated on the TRIM notices that were sent out by the county's property appraiser via first-class mail to every taxpayer on the property value assessment roll. For those in attendance wishing to address the board on this evening's proposed actions, citizen comments will be taken following the overview of the tentative budget by the Financial Services Officer of Management and Budget Team, and as part of each motion presented by the board for consideration. The Financial Services Director, John Brower, will now present an explanation of the proposed and rolled-back millage rates. John?
Mr. Chair, this evening will take several actions related to the adoption of the proposed millage rates and tentative budget for fiscal year ending September 30th, 2024. Tonight's hearing is the first of two public hearings required to be held per Florida statutes for taxing authority to properly adopt a millage rate and a budget for the upcoming fiscal year. As such, this is not the final budget hearing, and final adoption of the millage rates and budgets will not be considered tonight. Prior to the conclusion of this hearing, a specific date, time, and place of the second public hearing will be determined in order to adopt the final millage rates and final budget. Florida statutes require the name of the taxing authority, the millage rate to be levied, the rollback rate, and the percent, if any, by which the millage rate to be levied exceeds the rollback rate, be publicly announced. In addition, one of the requirements of the Truth in Millage legislation is to provide information about why proposed millage rates differ from the rollback rates. To begin, the Department of Revenue has determined that the Flagler County should combine the millage rates for the general countywide levy, proposed to be 7.9297 for FY 24, and a portion of the voter-approved millage used for environmentally sensitive lands, operating expenses, proposed to be 0.1250 mils, for the purpose of calculating the total operating millage and the applicable rollback rate. Rolled-back millage rate is generally defined as the millage rate which, exclusive of new construction, additions to structures, and a few other specific categories, will provide the same ad valorem tax revenue for each taxing authority as was levied during the prior year. For fiscal year 2024, adjusted tentative budget, the aggregate proposed operating millage for Flagler County Board of County Commissioners' countywide levy is 8.0547 mils, which is 8.46% greater than the rollback rate of 7.4265 mils. When the current year-proposed aggregate millage rate exceeds the calculated aggregate rollback millage rate, the TRIM process, in conjunction with Florida Statutes 200.065, requires that a notice of tax increase be advertised. The increase in property tax revenue is essential to fund the appropriations needed to implement the general countywide budget. Mr. Chair, to summarize, the budget adjustments made between July 10th of this year, when the tentative budget was presented to the board, and now, consider the total county-adjusted tentative budget for fiscal year 2023-24 is $287,38,539, which is a net increase of $8,413,264, compared to the original tentative budget of $278,000, or $625,275. The changes are shown broken down to the fund and function levels alongside the tentative FY 23-24 budget, as part of your document titled Schedule A, that is included within your agenda package. I'm happy to answer any questions pertaining to the changes or on the budget before you at this time.
Are there any questions, from the Commissioners? No. I would now like to invite citizens to comment on the fiscal year 2023-24 proposed millage and adjusted tentative budget overview that was just presented. There will also be an opportunity for citizens to comment on the fiscal year 2024 proposed millages and tentative budget individually, as each will be a motion brought before the board to be considered for the adoption. Please come forward to the podium if you wish to address the board. We do request that each speaker limit his or her comments to three minutes, and address your comments to the chair. Seeing no one approach, I will now close first public comment section of this public hearing. Mr. Brower.
Mr. Chair, the budget document before you titled Schedule A, shows the FY 24 tentative budget as presented to the board on July 10th, 2023, the adjustments made throughout this past summer, and the resulting FY 24 adjusted tentative budget. Any additional adjustments to this budget can be made by motion at this time.
Does any Commissioner wish to offer a motion to adjust the tentative budget before us this evening? Mr. Brower.
Mr. Chair, Florida statutes require the board to adopt proposed millage rates prior to adopting the related budget. As such, before you, is Resolution Number 2023-76, a resolution to adopt the tentative millage rates for fiscal year ending September 30th, 2024, pursuant to the provisions of Chapter 200 Florida statutes, providing for conflicts and severability, and providing for an effective date. This resolution includes the general fund millage of 7.9297, the voter-approved millage rate for environmentally sensitive lands' operating budget at 0.1250, the voter-approved environmentally sensitive lands' debt service millage at 0.1250, and the general obligation bonds millage for the Judicial Center at 0.1546. The total millage rate for FY 24 is 8.3343, which is 0.0119 mils lower than FY 23.
Mr. Dance.
Yeah, sorry. Page six.
To summarize, you-
We have motion to approve Resolution 2023-76, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. Motion to approve Resolution 2023-76, adopting the tentative millage rates for the fiscal year ending September 30th, 2024.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve Resolution Number 2023-76, adopting the tentative millage rates for the fiscal year ending September 30th. Any comments from Commissioners? I'll open it to the public. Anybody in the public wish to comment on Resolution Number 2023-76? Seeing no one approach, I'll bring it back to the Commission. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Hearing none, the motion passes. Mr. Brower.
Mr. Chair, subsequent to the board adopting the FY 24 tentative millage rates, is to adopt the corresponding FY 24 tentative budget as amended. Before you, is Resolution Number 2023-77, a resolution to adopt the changed revenue estimates and the adjusted tentative budget for fiscal year ending September 30th, 2024, pursuant to the provisions of Chapter 200 Florida statutes, providing for conflicts and severability, and providing for an effective date.
Move to approve Resolution Number 2023-77, adopting the changed revenue estimates and the adjusted tentative budget for the fiscal year ending September 30th, 2024.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve Resolution Number 2023-77. Commissioners, do you have any discussion on this? If not, I'll open up to public comment. Anybody in the public wish to comment on Resolution Number 2023-77? Seeing no one approach, I'll bring it back to the Commission. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Hearing none, the motion passes unanimously. Mr. Brower.
Mr. Chair, the final action requested by the board this evening is to establish and publicly announce the date, time, and location of the second of two public hearings to consider adopting the FY 2023-24 final millage rates and final budget. This hearing must be held within 20 days following the conclusion of tonight's public hearing, be properly advertised and held after 5:00 PM. If scheduled on a day other than Saturday, no hearing shall be held on a Sunday. In consideration of the restrictions mentioned, staff recommends that the second and final public hearing be scheduled for Monday, September 18th, 2023, at 5:01 PM, in the same location of the board's chambers.
Move to schedule the second and final public hearing to adopt the final FY 24 millage rates and budget for Monday, September 18th, 2023, at 5:01 PM, in the board's chambers, 1769 East Moody Boulevard, Building 2, Benel, Florida, 32110.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the date and time of the next hearing. Any comments from Commissioners on this? I'll open it to the public, there's a public wish, anybody in the public wish to comment on this date and time. Seeing no one approach, I'll bring it back to the Commission. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Hearing none, the motion passes unanimously. Mr. Brower.
Mr. Chair, the budget and TRIM-related business for this evening's public hearing is complete. Thank you.
This concludes the first of two TRIM-related public hearings, required by Florida Statute, Chapter 200.065. The next and final step to adopt the county's FY 24 budget will be the second and final public hearing to be held on September 18th, as previously approved. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
We're adjourned. Thank you all.